Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Item number two, additions to the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda as circulated? Councillor Paddy Durkey.
Yes, if I may, I would like to add, um, I don't know how to describe this, decorations for the holiday season.
All right, we'll put that under 8.2.
Thank you.
Decorations for the holiday season. Is there any more additions or deletions to the agenda as circulated? Hearing none, it entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Moved by Councillor Daniel Allen. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Councillor Nick Hilton. Motion on the floor to approve the agenda as amended. All who's in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried. Is there any declarations of conflict interest? If there is any, please, please note it to the chairman and we can record it with the recording secretary. Item number five. 5.1, Evan Nemeth, the Western Regional Enterprise Network, the Internet Initiative Update. Evan, if you wouldn't mind coming down, hitting your red button. And as soon as it's lit up bright red, not flashing, you have the floor. There you go, your mics on.
Hello there. Thank you for having me, everyone. My name's Evan Nemeth. I'm with the Western Regional Enterprise Network. I recognize some, but not all of you, and I think I've spoken to most of you over the last few weeks about internet anyhow. So today I have a presentation for you, just to give you an update on where we're at with internet in the municipality, as well as within the region. And just to give you a little bit of background, if you're not aware, I've been working on the internet file for the Western REN on behalf of the municipalities between Digby and Barrington since probably 2016. So this has been a long file, and we're seeing a lot of progress now, and it's a time to celebrate. But I'll walk you through where we're at. So to begin, I wanted to touch base with you all on the initial round of funding that was received through the Develop Nova Scotia RFP1. And this would have been back in February that these announcements were made. This was for projects that were short term in nature and could be completed within roughly a year. I think most, if not all of it, was supposed to be completed by the end of December of 2020. There was a project that was announced here within the municipality of Yarmouth, and I'll touch on that on the next slide. But there was a total of 1,000 civic addresses in Barrington, 510 in the municipality of Digby, and 400 within the municipality of Yarmouth that were awarded through that round of funding. On the screen, you can see that there is a map there. And what that map shows is the eligibility for that funding program during that first phase of funding. And I'll just jump onto the next slide to show you where that came to be in the municipality of Yarmouth. So within the municipality, there were 400 civic addresses in Pink knees point in Melbourne that would have received funding. Everything that you see there on the map is what was awarded. And the most recent update from Develop Nova Scotia says that that build should be completed by November 2020, so this month. Now, these projects were meant to be ones that could be completed quickly. And as such, there was a follow-up program that was for projects that would take more time. So working with Develop Nova Scotia and Bell, there was applications that were made and awarded for the region in five of our rural municipalities. The municipality of Argyle received funding for 2,500 civic addresses. Municipality of Barrington received an additional 850. The municipality of Clare through Bell received an additional 600 civic addresses. Municipality of Digby was an additional 100. And the municipality of Yarmouth received another 1,300 civic addresses. So you can see the eligibility map up on the screen. There have been announcements for the municipality of Yarmouth. These awards are meant to be completed in terms of when the build will be live for residents and businesses by, at the latest, summer of 2022. With my conversations with Bell on account of the fact that the municipality of Yarmouth and the other municipalities in the region made financial contributions towards this project, they will be viewing that favorably and may kind of put us on the front end of their planned build. But that's not guaranteed at this time. So as I mentioned, there are 1,300 civic addresses that were approved in addition to the previous 400 for the municipality of Yarmouth. Those are in Port Maitland, Cedar Lake, and Lake George, Brazil Lake, Lake Anis, Gardner's Mills, Pleasant Valley, Forest Glen, the Kempvilles, Raynard Inn, and South Canaan. And forgive me if I get any pronunciations wrong. So it might be hard to tell on this map. I can't actually show you the maps yet because they're technically not public at this time. But when they are updated on Develop Nova Scotia's website, I'll be able to show them in this kind of public session. So there are remaining gaps, and I've said this to another council. It's actually in excellent timing that there was a municipal election because it meant that you were all hearing from your constituents that much more and you were working directly with them. And as such, you were able to hear from people on the street about what the service may be within their area and relay that to me. So it was actually excellent. I heard from a number of councillors here. And I was able to relay that information back to Develop Nova Scotia and to Bell to let them know that there was a service gap. And through that process, Develop has acknowledged those service gaps and has made more areas eligible for funding within our region. So again, I'll read to you a list, and then I'll tell you what's going on on the map there. So there's Brenton, Shabogue Point Road, Shagogen Point Road, Doctor's Drive, Hard Scratch Road, Killiam Road, Leighton Street, Main Shore Road, Mood Road, Rodney Road, Ross Durkey Road, Sunday Lake, Thomas Road, and Treffery Lake Road. So I might not have mentioned a specific road that is adjacent to these, but generally speaking, anything that is within the surrounding area is included as well. But those would be kind of the bigger roads. So on the right, you see a map. That map is an overlay of data from Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada, who actually recently announced an additional funding amount of 750 million for Canada. And on that map, there, it's probably difficult for you to see in this setting, but there are green lines and there are red lines. The red lines indicate areas that do not have the speeds that meet the minimum requirements that Develop Nova Scotia has noted. And as such, I worked with this map and with the information that the councillors in the municipality of Yarmouth were able to provide me to relay the information to Develop that there were still gaps. And just one final slide. I just wanted to show you what the actual service package will be through the partnership with Bell once everything is up and running. It's 5 internet, which is to the home. It's a fiber optic cable, pretty much the most future-proof technology that presently exists for internet. The speeds are up to 1.5 gigabits per second down, or also up to 940 megabits per second up. And at this time, there are no data caps, so it's unlimited usage. In addition, there's the options to have 5 TV in both high definition and 4K at the home and home phone. And then the packages for their pricing are on the screen as well. So that is my update on internet. If there are any questions, please let me know.
Councillor Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Right, if we could back the, yeah, that one, absolutely. You know where I'm going, Evan. So when you talk about service gaps, I happen to live on Doctor's Drive and certainly Leighton Streets and was in District 5 and had lots, also in District 5, and had lots of conversations with people and all those other spots that you identify there, and bolded are important. So when you say service gaps, I know our internet service is woefully slow and inadequate. There's also, not on that list, but should be on the list, is Lakeside Road. Much of Lakeside Road has the same service that we have. And we've got a lot of professional people in the area, like people working at the hospital. They're working from home, and they're having like a lot of struggle with it. There are university kids home, online, woefully inadequate internet up our way and also on Leighton Street and those other locations. So anyway, Lakeside Road is a big issue too. So when you say service gaps, we have internet, but obviously it's not fiber up, and it's really slow. There's lots of demand, I'm certain, certain on the network, lots of users in those areas. So what are we talking? Timeline, you say funding's still available? Can you fill in some of those gaps in my, my knowledge in terms of where this is going and what we might do as a council to, to speed this process up? Because it's, it was a big issue on the doorstep, and likely so.
As far as speeding things up beyond the speed at which Develop Nova Scotia has already outlined, I'm not even sure if there's anything that can be done, unfortunately. I believe that one of the issues is that Bell was awarded for more or less the entire province, any of the remaining gaps that existed. And as such, their crews are going to be busy over the next two years. But beyond that too, it's working with Nova Scotia Power. And I've heard the same thing from other service providers, that tree trimming on the poles becomes an issue that can slow down the work. As far as what the gaps are that may still exist, a lot of the time, there's older technology that's being utilized. In terms of Bell's, they use the old copper wire for phone for internet, and I'm sure a lot of people are utilizing that at this time and finding that it's inadequate. Really, that's just something that needs to be updated. And I believe that Bell intends to update that as much as possible where they are providing that service, at least within the bounds of what's been awarded. Otherwise, there is Eastlink at this time, who's providing cable internet to the home and wireless internet to the home. Their cable network, their advertised speeds are usually up to 450 megabits per second, which exceeds the limits that Develop have in place for where funding would be eligible. So wherever Eastlink is, theoretically, the service should be up to par for the time being. But it is theoretical. And I guess what I could say about that is if people are experiencing regularly slower speeds than advertised and they're not meeting a minimum of 25 megabits per second download speeds, that they should be able to do a speed test of that and forward that information either to myself or their councillor. And I may be able to forward that to Develop Nova Scotia to make sure that they're aware that there's a service issue at that location. And ideally, depending on how long they're still assessing this situation, they'll be able to reassess the eligibility of some locations that are technically considered served right now.
Councillor Cunningham, you turned off your mic, so we're gonna have to go to the next, next councillor that has in the query number 11. I don't know how to turn on his mic back on, so that's the reason why we're gonna do this. So just keep that follow-up question, please. So Councillor Lauren Cushing, I believe you're next. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think Trevor Connaught alluded to some of the, some of the problems in, in my district too. And one of them was the Lakeside Road is partially in my district also. But my understanding, there's no timeline to, to pick up those other ones, like Shagogen Point, Main Shore, Thomas Road. There's no timeline on that at all, is my understanding, is that correct?
There's been nothing announced as far as a timeline at this time.
Yeah.
I want to believe that it will be the same as the most recent announcement, but I can't say for certain yet.
Yeah, that's my main concern there, it was. Okay, thank you.
I believe the next one in the query is Councillor Paddy Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Evan. So with regards to the next steps, so Develop knows that these are, there's inconsistencies in these areas, and they're saying that there is still funding available, and the likelihood of these being picked up is extremely high. Is that correct?
It is high, yes.
Yeah, but they haven't agreed to it yet.
They've agreed that it's eligible for funding.
Okay.
They've let Bell know that it is eligible for funding.
Okay.
And now Bell has the option to review that and make applications again on our behalf.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
And the next slide, which was cost, if.
For the service itself?
Yeah, cost of the service. Correct. So do those packages include, like they said, internet service packages? Are they including 5 and home phone, or are they, this just internet?
The packages on the right side there are strictly for internet.
Strictly internet?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, wonderful, thanks.
No problem.
I believe the next one in the query is Councillor Trevor Cunningham again. I think. All right, turn it back on, and I think we're gonna move to Councillor Nick Hilton.
Yeah.
Thank you, Evan, for the presentation. You talked about caps and the fact that at some point you haven't heard anything about there being a cap. Is that true that there's no talk of that, or is there talk of that in the future?
My understanding is that this time Bell has no data caps in the province, and they have a uniform pricing scheme for the entire province. So if it's not in existence right now, it presumably will continue not to be. They may reassess that in the future. Develop Nova Scotia, I don't believe, intends to enforce no data caps because that's actually a federal jurisdiction with the CRTC.
It would, it would definitely be a step back to have data caps at this point in time.
It definitely would be, and I would hate to see it.
Councillor Trevor Cunningham, your mic is finally on.
So thanks, Evan. And maybe, maybe through the chair to our CAO, it seems as though, given what Evan said, that, that there are advertised speeds, and that seems to be permissible if, if sort of the advertised speed in an area is, is there and it's over a certain threshold. That's my understanding what Evan's saying. But oftentimes, that's not the case because of, of the load on the network and that type of thing.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing from, from you, Evan. And as such, I think that perhaps we should give some thought to as a, as a council, either working with Evan or a third-party provider, to, to document some of those speeds in those areas so that we really have a handle on what we're talking about. And so we can go to those folks and say, yeah, I know it's, I know it's documented at this speed, but, but here's the reality of it. And, and I think if, if what I'm hearing, if I'm correct in what I'm hearing, that seems like a strategy we could use to, to hasten the improvements to the, to the network. So perhaps if, if we could task our, our CAO with thinking about that along with, with Evan and coming back to us. I don't know how doable something like that is, but seems, seems like a reasonable way forward. You know, just thinking off the top of my head, so I'll, I'll leave that with, with our CAO to ponder. And I'm not sure if she's got a comment right now off, at this time. But maybe after thinking about it, she could bring something back to, to council of some details around that issue because it is a huge issue.
Right. I'll quickly say that the only barrier would be even after documenting them, technically at this time, there'd be no funding for an area that already has advertised speeds that exceed the threshold set out by Develop Nova Scotia. So as I noted, if you document that information, you can get it back to Develop, and they can challenge their eligibility maps. So typically, the process would be either, at a minimum, getting an email from an individual at a civic address that has advertised speeds that are not being met, and having them send a speed test, a screenshot of a speed test that they might have done, which you can just Google "speed test" typically. And if their speeds are under that threshold of 25 megabits per second, then they may be considered eligible for funding in that area. I would note that you're gonna see different speeds at different times of day is another issue. As you mentioned, when the network is overloaded, a lot of people are working from home, learning from home right now. So you are gonna see increased load on the networks. So think about that time probably when all the kids get home from school and whether or not that's turning on Netflix or whatever it is. That's gonna put a burden on the network. So that would be the best time to do your speed test, make sure that you're getting what is advertised.
Councillor Daniel Allen.
Hey, hey, Evan. Well, as you know, I, Pickney's Point and Melbourne are extremely excited to be getting, to be getting it rolled out. It was really non-believers that it was happening until the trucks started rolling down and leading the lines and running the lines. When, have they indicated when they'll be able to access? Like, I know sometime this month was their target date. We haven't seen trucks in the area lately.
No.
Any idea when we may be able to access it, or what type of rollout will they get so that people know when they can start calling to get, to get it to their door?
Right. In previous instances like this, I know Sandy Cove on Digby Neck, they recently had a fiber build that was installed. And I believe that Bell was notifying people either with flyers or something of the like to let them know that the service was available.
Okay.
So I can double-check with my contact up Bell just to see where the build is at and when they expect it to be fully operational and people can start signing up. But my understanding is that if the website says by November 2020, then it should be this month that people can start accessing. I would say at the latest, probably end of the year.
Well, yeah, you can just, I guess you can understand, they've had no internet for the longest time. So now that they see the lines, they're chomping at the bit to get it to the house.
Yeah. Are the lines going up on the poles now? Like, it's not just tree trimming?
They've been down doing connections.
Yeah.
They've been, and like I said, the lines, trucks haven't been there for, they were working seven days a week. We've seen them on Sunday down doing the connections. And we haven't seen trucks for about a week now. So I'm kind of wondering how they're making out, if they've done their connections or.
It's possible that everything's done as far as installations, and now it's just network stuff on the back line that they have to do, or software updates?
So I did have a couple of questions when we were out on the campaign trail. I had a couple of houses in Greenville, on the Greenville Road, just past Highway 101, just on, just past the overpass. They seem to be in a dark zone. And it's only, from my understanding, two houses. And one of them has ExploreNet, and I asked her about doing their, the speed test, but they're the only person on the ExploreNet. So.
Right.
You know, it varies with them because once they reach their cap, it starts to slow down and things like that. So, and I had another one, same idea, on the Dominic Road, which my understanding was the new fiber op was kind of running through the Dominic Road, up through Arcadian, and then down towards Melbourne, I think, according to your map.
Right.
And he was saying that he had called about it, knowing that it was supposed to be coming, and they still didn't think he would be connected. So I'm just curious.
Is it just on the far right side there? Like, would it, would it be on the map as it is?
Okay, on the.
I think it's on the upper right of the top image, right?
On the left-hand map, where it gets to the top, I think that's the Arcadian. It starts to go to the right. Would that not be the Dominic Road, the little black line going towards the, the top of it?
Yes.
Is that not the Dominic Road there?
I believe so. So going strictly from memory, I believe that another portion of that road is included in RFP2.
Okay.
So it might be something that's coming later.
They will be getting, okay.
But I'll double-check.
Okay. Yeah, and like I said, the other one was, was on the Greenville Road, just past the overpass. And there's, there's only two homes. Eastlink does run through there, but will not connect them.
Right. So they're at the end of the line, more or less.
They're at the end of the line. And then it starts on the other side of the highway. I think Eastlink is also there, connected, running towards Hebron.
But just not meeting in the middle.
Right. So what, what do we do with that kind of instance? Like, how do we?
That would be an instance where, I'll say this first off, if someone's on ExploreNet, they're not getting wired internet. So even if they're getting the advertised speeds that exceed 25 megabits per second, they would still be eligible for funding if no wired internet is available or a local wireless tower that can meet those speeds. Right now, the satellites that are in orbit are such high altitude that there's large latency issues when you, like, especially if you were on a Zoom call or something like that. You'd be talking and the other person would be kind of interfering as far as like you guys matching up. So in those instances, I think an address is still eligible, even if it's through satellite. There are new satellite technologies coming out now. I know Tesla has something going up Sterlink or something like that, I think it's called. And that was recently approved by Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada to be a provider in Canada. But there's no outline on when that service will go live. So what I would say is if they don't have wired internet and they're getting it through ExploreNet, then they are likely eligible. And if you could send me the addresses, I will just confirm with my map, and then I'll share that information with Develop.
Okay, great, thanks, Evan.
Councillor Lauren Cushing.
You mentioned about ExploreNet and maybe a little bit of hard-to-do Zooms and whatnot. I have ExploreNet myself, and all the Zoom meetings, I've, I've been able to snap right into them, no problem at all. But I'm definitely interested in fiber when it comes down Shagogen Point.
Right.
But I have no trouble with ExploreNet, except when your data is up, it, it slows down.
That's right.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah, the issue typically is one person will start talking, but there's a latency between when you send your data to space and it comes back down. So people talk over one another a lot more on satellite. That's the typical issue.
Any other questions from councillors? Stop?
I do have one, Evan, and this is in regards to a news release that was released yesterday about the federal government are going to be adding $750 million to the Universal Broadband Fund. I'm sure you probably have heard about it. There's also an announcement on, on our local radio station as well. Do you know how this may or may not affect internet and/or cellular service in, in the area?
If, I'm not sure that it includes cellular, but I'll double-check that. As far as internet goes, I would have to look at the eligibility maps. I don't know if those are released yet, but I think they just announced the fund. So I'll, I'll take a look and see if there's maps available. If there are maps available for areas, it's possible that Develop is already going to be filling that gap with Bell anyway, and those funds are mostly already allocated. So the other thing too, to keep in mind with this, I think that those projects are meant to be completed by 2026. So you might have a longer timeline before installations come into effect compared to Develop. But I will definitely be looking to see if there's any areas that would benefit from having funds from two sources. Typically, these would be the harder-to-reach areas where the cost to reach someone is a little higher. But honestly, going from my work with Develop Nova Scotia and Bell at this time, I'm not sure that there'll be any substantial gaps left for the federal government's funds to fit. We might, we might be ahead of them, so.
It, it does say in here by, the federal government's promises by 2030, everybody will be.
Yeah, that's for 100%. 98% they say by 2026.
Yeah, that's right. All right, thank you very much, Evan. Much appreciated. If anyone has any questions, I'm sure you know how to contact them. Just please get us, hold the CAO if you don't have his contact information. And thank you very much.
All right, thank you all very much. Do I press this again?
Yes, you can turn off the button again.
All right. Moving on, item number six, correspondence for action, 6.1.1. Picto County Letter to the Premier Stephen McNeil. Madam CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chairs. In your package, council is a letter from the CAO for the Picto County, as well as a resolution that was passed by that council on the 5th day of October. That council had identified COVID-related losses at a recreation center that they jointly own with other municipalities. And at that time, they. And at that time, they were lobbying for specific funding support from the provincial government related to those types of operations. And so the letter is requesting support from other municipalities across Nova Scotia to lobby in the same manner. Since then, we've had an announcement and received our safe restart money. And our safe restart calculation included what I calculated our share of losses at the Mariners Center and leisure services would be. So I reached out to the CAO yesterday at Picto County just to see if there was an update from them with respect to their position now that the safe restart money has been rolled out. And I wasn't able to connect with him. My guess is that if, if this council were to make a similar resolution and write similar correspondence to the province, that they would indicate back to you that you have received money for this. Now, having said all that, when the calculations were performed in the spring that created the data which created the federal restart money, we did not anticipate COVID moving significantly into the next fiscal year. So our projections and calculations were based on losses for the current fiscal year that we're in. If COVID happens to linger into significantly into 2021 and in particular significantly into our next fiscal year, which would begin April 1st, it might be something that you might want to revisit. We just don't, we just don't know.
Counselor Trevor Cunningham.
Right, so that, that seems reasonable. So if we were to add this in advance to the, for instance, the January, to bring this back to the table in January to discuss, it may be good, so it's not forgotten, to formally add that to the agenda and, and if we, if we need to remove that from the agenda, if there are the developments, we can remove that at this time. But that's a recommendation to, through you, to, to the CAO. And perhaps we'd look for comment from the, from the CAO on that, on that strategy or approach.
Absolutely. It doesn't hurt at all to maybe formally request that be added to the agenda and then we'll be sure that it's on the agenda now for January and we'll come back to it and look at the data, see where we're at.
All right, so you made a motion, Counselor Trevor Cunningham, to move this item to the January committee, the whole meeting? All right. Motion on the floor, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any discussion on that motion? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, could you please come up and take over the chair for item 6.1.2? I need to be excused from the table for one moment. Yeah, everything is on.
So 6.1.2, tie-ins call in the province to change Tourism Assistance Fund Responsibility. And I'll defer to our CAO for, for briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the package is a series of documents that provide you just with a little bit of the history around the lobbying and advocacy that the Tourism Industry Association of Nova Scotia and the Yarmouth and Acadian Shores Tourism Association have been doing to see that there are, there are broad supports to the tourism sector with respect to COVID and, and the losses that the sector has suffered because of COVID. So the most recent letter is, is the one on the top of the series of documents. And basically that is tie-ins response to the very specific, specific targeted fund as well as how the fund is being administered. So essentially, the Tourism Industry Association of Nova Scotia is taking exception to the fact that the fund is only for a very few tourism operators and that the fund is being administered through a university as opposed to through a crown corporation or the government itself. And so the request before you is that the District of Yarmouth echo those concerns and craft a letter.
So do I have a, a motion from one of the counselors to, to do that, to do such a thing? Ms. Durkey, and she is number...
Eleven, yeah.
Number one?
So next, this one.
Oh, this is the next? Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Cunningham. I would agree. I think that it is, it should be something that the province oversees. And I will make that motion that we write to the province to, to support tie-ins request to bring control of the financing for the tourism industry back to the provincial government.
Okay, so we have a mover, do we have a seconder? The seconder, Counselor Allen. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. And the next, the next item is response from Congre Mondeal Acadian.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. The Mariners Center Expansion Committee that's been working on both a short-term solution and a long-term solution to our recreation infrastructure needs had named themselves Yargyle 2024. And there, there was an inadvertent connection between that work and the work that's being done between the municipality of Yargyle and the municipality of Clare to celebrate the Acadian Congre in 2024. So the chair of our working group, who happens to be our now Warden John Cunningham, wrote a letter of apology to the president of the Congre Working Group, who is Alistair Surrett. And so we've received a response from Mr. Surrett thanking us for our apology and also taking us up on an offer to continue to have a dialogue and, and work together to celebrate the Acadian culture in our communities. And a formal offer has been extended to create a dialogue with the executive director of their working group. And so we're bringing it before you because that will be a formal relationship. It will be formal team building. And so we're bringing it before council to have discussion and to seek your decision on that.
Counselor Durkey.
I support that request. Would you like that to be made into a motion?
Please.
So I'll make a motion to support the request from the Congress Mondeal to open up discussion on moving forward with their program.
So it's been moved by Counselor Patty Durkey. We have a seconder, Lauren, Lauren Cushing, Counselor Cushing. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion carried, thank you. I'll now cede the, the chair to Warden Cunningham.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Please be noted in the minutes that I return to the chair at 11:45. All right, we've done item 6.12, 6.13. Item 6.1.4, NSFM AMA requests for funding. Madam CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packages is a letter from the President of the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities and the President of the Association Municipal Administrators. That letter is bringing before all of the municipalities in Nova Scotia an idea for continuing to support those associations as they support municipal government in Nova Scotia. The federal safe restart money that was allotted to the municipality of the District of Yarmouth included an allotment above and beyond what was requested of $14,268. Municipalities across Nova Scotia shared in that $1.067 million. And the Association Municipal Administrators and the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities are looking to post a one-time COVID-related administration fee equivalent to 15% of that $1.067 million as a way to support them for their financial losses that they've experienced during COVID. So as you may or may not know, both of those associations support the work of municipal government through broad initiatives at the provincial table and then they liaise with their federal counterparts for federal issues. Their revenue streams are heavily reliant on workshops, training seminars and conferences. And so COVID, as you can imagine, has just decimated their revenue streams and they have experienced significant losses. They, both associations have amended their business plan and are now delivering training and workshop opportunities virtually. And there are charges for some of those, but it's not enough to replace the revenues that have been lost from the conference pieces. And so I do support the request from the AMA and the NSFM for the municipality of the District of Yarmouth to make a $2,140 contribution to, to those associations, which would be shared 50-50 between the two as, as our contribution back to them for, from our safe restart.
What is, what is the counselor? Counselor Daniel Allen.
Well, they do a lot of work on our behalf. And so I, I'm willing to make that motion to, do you have to have me spell it out or can we just? I like to make the motion to approve the request for funding from the NSFM and AMA in the amount of...
$2,140. $2,140.
$2,140, $2,140.
All right, motion on the floor to support the AMA's request of $2,140. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton. Any discussion on that motion?
I do have one. Madam CAO, where would that funding be coming from? What part of the, the budget?
Well, it's actually an unbudgeted revenue stream because it's, it's money that we did not know we were going to be realizing this fiscal year. It's, it's out of the safe restart money.
So, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Is there any more? Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to reiterate what our CAO said, that NSFM and AMA have worked diligently. The number of meetings that have been held during COVID have been unreal and I can safely say that because I'm on the board. And certainly I don't benefit in any way from any financial contributions made to NSFM. But that money would not have come forward if it had not been for the two groups working together and lobbying to the provincial, advocating to the provincial government for that money. So I completely support this request. And I can also tell you that because of the conferences not being held and the workshops not being held, that there is no income source coming for that reason. So if you would agree to this, I would be, I know that NSFM and AMA would be very thankful.
Thank you very much, Counselor Durkey. And thank you for your service on that board on behalf of the municipality. Madam CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will just clarify, the CAOs have had conversations about this initiative as they've been getting ready to bring them forward to their councils. And I will share with you, there was a conversation around justification. So the AMA and the NSFM exist to lobby and advocate. That's what they do exist to do. But, and we wouldn't want anybody to think that when we achieve success in our regular business that we do, that there would be an expectation that municipalities would financially reward those groups for those successes. That's not what this is about. This is specifically and only related to COVID. And I just want to, in case anybody was wondering, I wanted to make that clear.
All right, any more discussion on that motion? If not, I'd entertain a question on that. Question being called on the motion. All those in, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Moving on, item 6.2.1. For your information, a letter from resident Susan E. Gray. You all have that in your package. Moving on, item number seven, 7.1, Accessibility Advisory Committee Terms of Reference.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Director of Corporate Services and the rest of the team had brought before you the terms of reference for the District of Yarmouth's Accessibility Advisory Committee last winter before COVID hit. And at that time, a recommendation had been made to council for the structure and the size of the committee, which we are legislatively required to have in order to create a plan for accessibility in the District of Yarmouth. We've been advertising since then for those five citizen reps and, and we have not received the required number of applicants to fill the seats, never mind have a selection process. And so Darlene and I have had some conversations with some individuals. And what we've learned is that the very community who we would like to have sit on the, on the committee struggle day to day to look after their immediate needs. And committee work can often be challenging for them just because of their day-to-day realities. The work must happen, we're required to do it, and it's important work. So I bring before committee, the whole, a recommendation for them to move to council that we amend the structure of the advisory committee from five community members to two community members, keeping in mind that one half of the committee must either be individuals with a disability or represent groups who have disabilities. And I think we can still accomplish that requirement.
Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
Right, I'll, I'll move that, we, I'll move that we, we move municipality District Yarmouth, move the Accessibility Advisory Committee Terms of Reference as circulated with the change you've, you've outlined to our next regularly scheduled council meeting for approval.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlbert. The first one I seen. Is there any discussion on that motion? Counselor Daniel Allen.
Could I just have the motion read back as I'm just getting back? Sorry.
So the motion is, it was moved by Counselor Trevor Cunningham, seconded by Sherry Hurlbert, to move the Accessibility Advisory Committee amended terms of reference to regular council meeting for approval.
You happy with that, Counselor Allen? Okay, thank you very much. Is everyone clear on the motion? If they are, I'd entertain a question on the motion. Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously, thank you. Item 7.2, Request for Decision, Lake Milo Active Transportation Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a briefing note and a request for decision in your package. I'll just very quickly summarize that this is a longstanding project that has been on the District of Yarmouth's possible capital investment plan for a number of years. For a variety of reasons, it has held different places in your priority sequence. I was recently directed by council to go back to the design phase of the project and, and begin again. We have experienced good success with this type of project through the Cape for Shoe Master Plan. The fact that the committee is involved and engaged and feels a sense of pride and ownership bodes well for the Lake Milo piece as well. So I'm recommending that committee, the whole recommend to council that we strike a similar structure for the Lake Milo Active Transportation Project and have that before you for your consideration.
Counselor Trevor Cunningham.
Right, so I'll, I'll move that the municipality District Yarmouth accept our CAO's recommendation to council to approve the Lake Milo Active Transportation Master Plan Steering Committee Terms of Reference as circulated.
Okay, motion on the floor, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any discussion on that motion? Counselor Trevor Cunningham. Uh, sorry, Counselor Lauren Cushing?
Oh. Did I, uh?
My apologies.
Yeah, it's, uh, as I was involved with the Cape for Shoe Comprehensive Master Plan and, and it did work very well. And we had a... it did work very well, and we had a good input from the public, from the tourism, and the consultants that did a great work. So I think it's a, I think that's the, we're heading in the right direction on trying to develop something for the Lake Milo Active Transportation Master Plan too. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a good direction going, and I certainly be willing to help out in that, so.
Before I acknowledge you, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, I must apologize. I did say councillor Trevor Cunningham the previous time, old habit. So Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
That's quite all right, I'm both the councillor and deputy warden, so it's all good, either way. So yeah, yeah, I'll just echo councillor Lauren Cushing's comments. It's a great project for the whole municipality, got a lot of support throughout the municipality, and for those folks that weren't around the table previously, it is, it is very, very longstanding effort to do something there, and it is sort of central in the municipality. So looking forward to the approval and getting to work on the, on the project. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on that motion? If not, I'd entertain a question. Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 7.3, Boards and Committees. This one could be fun. You all have that in your, on your computers, and also I believe everyone has it in paper So you all have the descriptions of the various committees that council serves on, whether they're legal entities, or ad hoc, or advisory committees. In their, in your descriptions, what the committee's about, and the usual meeting I never really went over with the CAO on how we should go about this. I don't know if we should have any motions in that regard, or just put up hands or requests they'd like to sit on that committee? And if there's more than wants to sit on that committee, how should we deal with that?
So what, Mr. Chair, maybe what we could do is just start off with, if there's any questions from any member of council about the descriptions, if anybody requires clarification on any of the boards or committees that are listed, before you have your discussion about who will represent the District of Yarmouth on each one.
Yeah. Could we do that individually, Madam CAO? Like, the first one that's up here is the Manor Centre Management Board. Maybe what we could do is just give a quick description if there's any questions, or filling in any more blanks that any councillors may have, and then we ask for, ask who would like to sit on that committee? Can you pencil them in?
Yep, whatever works best for council. We can, you know, do the Q and A all at once, or we can do the Q and A and then make a decision and move on, whichever.
I serve at council's pleasure. Is that the way you'd like to see it, or is councillor Trevor Cunningham?
Right, I mean, it is kind of an organic process because the list is quite long. So I think we've got the written description here. I think if we start off and start filling them piece by piece, and then maybe at the end, if the balance isn't quite right, like, we might have a conversation at the end to double back and say, you know, did folks sort of end up where they wanted to be in terms of, you know, their interests, and where they think they could be of most value to the municipality on the various committees and so forth, and maybe then we could approve, approve the list and move to council for final approval at the end, so.
Yeah, that's, that's more or less the way I was thinking about going ahead.
Perfect, yeah.
This is the first time I can ever remember that we actually did it in a committee the whole, in this way, but I think this is a better process. It leaves a lot of transparency to the public, whoever may watch this meeting. So I guess the first one on the docket is Manor Centre Management Board. Membership required, one elected official. So I guess I'll put it out there, who would like to sit on that committee? Councillor Daniel Allen? Is there any others? Maybe I'll do it three times. Is there any others? Any others? Oh, that one was easy. Councillor Allen? Item number two, Regional Solid Waste, Waste Check. Councillor Lauren Cushing? We need two elected officials on that. I must say, I must apologize councillor Hurlbert, because I find that, looking through the panes of glass, sometimes I see my reflection there, and I can't always see your hand, so my apologies for that. So councillor Lauren Cushing and councillor Sherry Hurlbert. Is there any other who would like to sit on that? Anymore? Third and final time? Thank you. Western Counties Regional Library, one elected official and one alternate. Councillor Patty Durkey, would you wish to be sit there as council's representative or the alternate?
Excuse me.
Councillor Durkey. Is there anyone else who would like to either sit as the representative or the alternate?
We need an alternate for that.
Yes, we do.
I would say it's an alternate.
All right, councillor Daniel Allen. Is there any others who'd like to sit on that committee? Going once? Twice? Thank you, council. Item number four here, the Western Regional Enterprise Network Liaison and Oversight Committee. Councillor Patty Durkey, you wish to sit on that? You've previously sat on that in the last term, correct?
Not for the full amount of time. I was having to...
Yeah. Is there any other councillor that would like to sit on that committee? Going once? Twice?
Councilor Heather Alford.
Yes, I'm going to get to that. Also, there's an alternate position for that board appointment, councillor Lauren Cushing. Is there any others who would like to sit as an alternate on that, or a board member? Once? Twice? Thank you very much, council. Plus, this is, excuse me, going quite smoothly this time. Item five, Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission. Councillor, councillor Lauren Cushing and Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. Is there any other councillors that would like to sit on there as our regular members? Going once? Going twice? Gone. Also, we need an alternate to sit on that. Councillor Nick Hilton. Is there any others? Once again councillor Hurlbert, I must apologize, there's all, there's a whole bunch of...
Glare.
Glare here. It's only because the sun's in the background. Is there any others who'd like to sit on there? Going once? Councillor Nick Hilton would be alternate. Yarmouth and Acadian Shores Tourism Board. Councillor Patty Durkey. Is there any others who would like to sit on that?
I would entertain sitting on that as well.
Okay, councillor Daniel Allen. It's two of you.
Actually, do we use to get an alternate for that?
That's right. So not every legal entity provides for an alternate appointment in their documents, and this was one where there's no provision for an alternate.
Did you use to be an alternate that one when you first got elected?
No, you know what?
Your head.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, so you're retracting your name, councillor Allen?
Yes, I am, of course.
All right, is there any other? Any others? Third and final call? Councillor Patty Durkey? That's your appointment. Item number seven, Yarmouth County Solid Waste Management Authority Waste Park. I see two hands to my right, councillor Sherry Hurlbert and councillor Lauren Cushing. I did see you this time because I'm looking around in the shadows. Is there any other who would like to sit on there? Going once? Thank you very much, council. Item number eight, Yarmouth International Airport Corporation. I'm going to put my hand up for that one. I'm the, I'm the current chair. I've only been the chair of that committee for the past three, four months, and I finally got a mandate from all the municipal owners to move forward on, on making a plan to get that whole operation a little bit more fiscally responsible. This has been an ongoing issue for years, and I'm finally glad to have the reins now. Whether they elect me as chair again, I don't know, but I certainly would love to sit on there at council's discretion. Is there any others? Councillor Trevor Cunningham? Sorry, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham?
Just a note on this, but perhaps we could have our CAO read off the number before we come to decide the number of provisions and so forth. I called up, I got a note.
It's on the back.
Oh, it's on the back.
Yep.
There's even a swap with Bill and the meeting.
So, so I would like to sit there. That's a very important committee that, that's, so thank you very much, council. Also, we need one alternate for that committee. Councillor Nick Hilton. Is there any others who would like to sit on there? Any others? Third and final call? Thank you. Item number nine, Audit Committee. Membership required. I'm automatically required to sit on the audit committee. We also need one elected official and one alternate. Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham and councillor Daniel Allen. Which councillors would like to sit there? We also need an alternate for that as well.
I'm more willing to be the alternate.
Okay, councillor, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. My apologies once again, I'm, old habits are hard to break sometimes. So, so you're willing to sit as the elected official?
Yeah.
So we'll have Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham and the alternate councillor Daniel Allen. Is there any others who would like to sit on that committee? Is there any others? Third and final time? Thank you very much. Item number 10, CAO Committee. Membership required. This requires the warden, the deputy warden, so we're automatically assigned to that. And the elected official is one, it changes annually. Councillor Patty Durkey, you've sat on there previously. Thank you very much for your service in the last term. Is there any others who'd like to? Councillor Daniel Allen? Is there any others? Third and final call? Item number 11, Dr. Recruitment and Intentionary, one elected official. Councillor Patty Durkey. Is there any others for the first elected official? Any others? Thank you very much councillor Durkey. You did a fine job on that committee the last time, appreciate it. We also need one alternate there as well. Councillor Sherry Hurlbert. Is there any others? Going once? Twice? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I could, maybe I'll just summarize how many appointments each councillor has before you keep, before you keep going.
Absolutely, go ahead, Madam CAO. We also, one thing I should note, I did send an email to you and our IT guy, Mike, I can't tell if your microphone's on or not.
Mine's always on.
Yours is always on? Go ahead, Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just in summary, I think we're both halfway through, so I'll just summarize. So we have the warden with three appointments, the deputy warden with three appointments, councillor Durkey with four, councillor Cushing with four, councillor Hilton, only alternates, no official appointments, councillor Allen with two, and councillor Hurlbert with
Item 12, Remo Executive. There's two appointments to that, one of them would be me. I'm the previous chair of that. Is there any councillors? Councillor Nick Hilton. Is there any other councillors? Is there any other? Third and final call? So myself and councillor Nick Hilton. Item 13, Heritage Advisory Committee. Councillor Sherry Hurlbert, there's two elected officials. Do we have a seconder? A second? Councillor Patty Durkey, that one only meets quarterly, it's not a, an intensive committee. Is there any other council members? Third and final call? Thank you. Joint Green Energy Committee. Two positions for that, one elected official and one alternate. Councillor, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham and councillor Daniel Allen. Which one of you would like to sit as the elected official, which one would like to sit as the alternate?
I'll be the alternate. I'll return to the board.
So councillor Daniel...
I'll put my hand up for the alternate because you already gave your hand up. You're welcome. You're not telling me. That's okay. Go back. Do you want to give it? I'll give it up. Sure.
Councillor Daniel Allen is the elected official one, and the alternate would be the deputy warden. Is there any other wishing to sit on that committee? Once? Thank you. Rugby Promotions and Levy Advisory Committee. That would be me. That's a membership required, and also one elected official. Who would like to sit on that committee? Any takers? We can always come back to that. Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, you'd like to sit on that? So it'd be me and Trevor. 16, Planning Advisory Committee. One committee that I've sat on since my very first term, and this time I'm not going to reoffer. I've been the chair of that committee for nine years, I think it's time for a change. So there's going to be four elected members and two alternates. So who'd like to sit on that committee? I see councillor Lauren Cushing. Go ahead, councillor Nick Hilton.
I realize that committee's probably one of the busiest ones throughout.
Not necessarily, no. It depends if there's any work there or not.
And when does it usually meet?
Evenings.
Thursday evenings, or sorry, Tuesday evenings at 7:30, but that would be the committee's prerogative to change.
That's perfect. I'll, I'll volunteer.
So I have councillor Lauren Cushing, councillor Patty Durkey, councillor Nick Hilton, is there, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham? We also need two alternates.
Nice.
I guess that would be Daniel and councillor Daniel Allen, councillor Sherry Hurlbert.
In that, in that order or...
It doesn't matter. Usually what happens, if a committee member cannot attend that Planning Advisory Committee meeting, usually the member that can't attend will call one of the two alternates. It doesn't really matter. As a warden, I'm allowed to sit there at any of the committee meetings at any time. That committee's also going to need a new chair, so it's, the committee themselves would have to elect a chair. We don't do that here. That's a very entertaining committee and very busy committee at times, and other times it's not busy at all, so. And I got a feeling it could be busy.
Mr. Chair, I will, I will just add that we are going into a comprehensive review of the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaws, so if you're interested in planning issues, it's a great time to learn a lot.
That's one of the most interesting and most... That's one of the most interesting and most impactful committees to the whole municipality and the residents, as a matter of fact. In regards to zoning issues, municipal planning, land use bylaws, it's, it's quite intense sometimes, but it's a lot of fun as well. A lot to learn. We also have three community members that are appointed to that. We're going to have to discuss that committee afterwards in regards to the community appointments to that. There may be some that are expiring.
We have a separate policy that we go through for that.
All right, thank you, council. 17, Yarmouth Recreation, three elected officials and two alternates. Counselor Lauren Cushing, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. Is there any third one? Counselor Daniel Allen. Is there anyone who'd like to be the elected official?
Alternate?
Or, I'm just going to the ones and then I'll move to the alternates. Lauren and Trevor. That one is bimonthly, every other month. When is that usually? All right, is there any others who would like to sit as the elected officials? Once, twice? Now, we need two alternates. Counselor Sherry Hurlbert and Counselor Nick Hilton. Is there any others? Once, twice? Thank you very much. Accessibility Advisory Committee. We need two elected officials. Counselor Sherry Hurlbert. Also, remember that this one needs one of our members if you have some sort of disability.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent of the committee makeup? Is there any other council members? We need to, Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any others? Going once? Twice? Thank you, council. Item number 19, Yarmouth County Solid Waste Park Board. Counselor Lauren Cushing. We need two officials for that. Is there any others? This is the waste park.
Oh, we did, yep, we did. It is duplicated, yep.
It is duplicated?
Yep. Might have fixed it.
There's the management authority waste park, and then there's the waste park board.
There's, yep, there's only two, Mr. Chair, there's only two organizations, yep. So, you may have a package that shows number 19 as the Yarmouth County Solid Waste Park Board, and that is a duplicate if you also see it as number seven.
Is everyone clear on that?
Yep.
All right, that's a duplicate of number seven that some of you had and some of you don't. Item 20, Fence Arbitration Committee. I'm a, I'm a former firmer, I should sit on that. That committee's not two. So, I see Counselor Daniel Allen, Counselor Lauren Cushing, and my... Would you like to sit there? Are you sure? Actually, I think that would be a good idea. It's not a, certainly not a committee that meets very often, that's for sure. So, I do have a lot on my plate just by being the warden, so I think that would be a good idea. I can't attend at any meeting at any time, and I certainly plan on attending a lot of these committee meetings even though I'm not... Yeah. Actually, yeah, I will, I will go down as an alternate. And so, it'd be Counselor Allen, Counselor Cushing, Counselor Hilton, and I'll go down as an alternate. Is there any others that'd like to go for an alternate? Deputy Warden? I've made a fence for two of my lifetime, I can tell you that. Mariner Center Expansion Committee. One would be the warden, that would be me, I'm the current chair of that committee. Deputy Warden? Counselor Trevor, or sorry, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. I'll get that straight sooner or later.
Yes, and, and I'm going to suggest, Counselor Daniel Allen sat on the board previously. I'm going to suggest that he replace the deputy warden in that role for the foreseeable future. So, I'm not certain if any terms of reference and that type of thing has to be altered, but I'm going to make that a recommendation, perhaps through you to the CAO. Talk about the perm, is the permissibility or how we can have that happen?
CAO?
So, Mr. Chairman, we did approve, council did approve, a terms of reference which called for the warden and the deputy warden, so I can bring that to council for ratification on the 25th of November if it's your wishes to move this way. We are, we are quite a ways down that path, so continuity might be helpful.
What is the wishes of council? You wish to move... Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham?
Right, so I'll make a motion that we bring the terms of reference to the next regularly scheduled council meeting and make the alteration to allow Counselor Allen to continue his good work on the, on the Mariner Center Expansion Committee because it is quite far along, and I think that would, would interrupt the process, so I'll make that a motion.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any discussion on that motion? Counselor Daniel Allen?
I know it's probably not right, but I'll accept the offer. Thanks for asking. But, no, that, no, that's fine, no, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that, Deputy Warden, I appreciate that. I've enjoyed the, I've enjoyed being on this since I've had to step in, in the absence of our previous warden. And, no, I'd really like to continue with it, so, no, thank you.
Is there any more discussion on that motion? One thing I should note, that some parts of that committee, we're about a third of the way through, and there's been a lot of work, background work that's already been done. There's been tours of Counselor Allen Headman, previously sitting on the Bridge Committee, and so he has a bunch of the background, so it would help us move along with that process rather than him to backtrack, because that's something that we've certainly heard from our residents during the past municipal election, that they wanted to see the bridge and the new build, so that would ensure a lot of continuity. That's my comments on that. Is there any other comments on the motion? Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary? Motion carried. So, it would be me, intentively Counselor Allen provided council ratifies that. Item 22, Lake Milo Active Transportation Master Plan Steering Committee. There's one elected official. All right, Counselor Lauren Cushing? You have the floor.
I am interested in it, but it is in Deputy Warden's, Trevor Cunningham's district. But I'd like to, if it's, if it's, if it's, if it's okay with Deputy Warden, that I do, I do sit on that, but if he wishes to sit on it, he certainly could, you know, it's his district. But anyway, I'm very interested in that kind of projects.
Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham? Counselor Cushing, can you turn off your mic, please? Deputy Warden?
And I thank, thank Counselor Cushing for putting his name forward for the position. While it is in my district, I do view this project as a little bit different than, than many others, because I think it does have ramifications for the whole municipality. It's, it's not just a District Five project, it happens to be in District Five, but, but it really, I guess, maybe more than any other project that I know of, has benefits for the whole municipality, including council, all councilors' areas are all seven districts. So, so having said that, I know Counselor Cushing's done yeoman's service with the Cape Four Shu Master Plan, he's experienced in that area. So, having said that, I think, think that's a, a, a good way forward, and I'd certainly endorse his working on that committee, and I'll, I'll certainly work closely with him and the others on, on moving the project forward. So, thank you, Counselor Cushing, for, for making that offer.
Counselor Lauren Cushing?
Yes, although it is not my, my district, but right across the lake from Milo is, it is my district, so it would benefit my district too because of the area, and as, as our deputy warden, you know, it would benefit the municipality as a whole, and also the citizens of the town would certainly be able to make, take full advantage of it too. We're buttressed against the town line in the Milo project, that's their, the Lake Milo boat house. And the Milo Boat Club has been, is a very interesting, there's been a large part of my, my experience also, where I was, when I was working with the town, it was one of my projects to, to revamp that, and now it's being revamped again. So, it just ties one project into another one, which I, I think is very important, and I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other appointments to that? Lake Milo Active Transportation Master Plan? Counselor Durkey? Would you like to sit on that? Or would you like to speak?
To speak.
Go ahead.
I just want to comment that, that I think this is an exciting project that's going to benefit the whole region, which we haven't really mentioned, but I know, once that's done, it's so close to town that they're, that I'm really excited for this. I think particularly with COVID and the federal government pushing for more activities outside, I mean, there might be funding available that we can access for it, but yeah, I think it's great.
All right, is there any other nominations for that committee? Third and final time? Counselor Lauren Cushing? You're in. I must say that I'm very excited about that master plan as well, because over the years, we've discussed on different things on how that could improve, like sort of some sort of aqua theater of some sort, some seating and stuff along the bank of the lake, so it'd be really interesting. That, that, that whole area is an asset to the, all the residents of the municipality district, you know, that's for sure. I believe that concludes the committee appointments. I'm just going to refer to the Madam CAO and/or council. If there's an imbalance or appointments, if there's anyone that has any sober second thoughts of any council meeting they may wish to sit on, Counselor Patty Durkey, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, through you to the CAO, I'm just wondering if we could do a review of how many people, how many committees each individual has, because I'm certainly willing to give some options.
Okay, maybe what I'll do, Mr. Chair, is I'll read through what I've noted, and maybe between all of you and our municipal clerk, we'll make sure we're all in agreement, and then I'll give the tally on the workloads. Is that okay? So, I have Mariner Center Management Board, Counselor Daniel Allen. Regional Solid Waste, which we know as Waste Check. Counselor Lauren Cushing and Counselor Sherry Hurlbert. Western Counties Regional Library, Counselor Patty Durkey, with Counselor Daniel Allen as the alternate. And when I give the tally on the appointments, I'm not including alternates. Western Regional Enterprise Network Liaison Oversight Committee, Counselor Patty Durkey and Counselor Lauren Cushing as the alternate. Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, Counselor Lauren Cushing, Counselor, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, and Counselor Nick Hilton as the alternate. Yarmouth and Decade and Shores Tourism Association, Counselor Patty Durkey. Yarmouth County Solid Waste Management Authority, Counselor Lauren Cushing and Counselor Sherry Hurlbert. Yarmouth International Airport Corporation, Warden John Cunningham and alternate Counselor Nick Hilton. Audit Committee, Warden John Cunningham, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, alternate Counselor Daniel Allen. CAO Committee, Warden John Cunningham, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, elected official, Counselor Daniel Allen. Doctor Recruitment and Retention, Counselor Patty Durkey, Counselor Sherry Hurlbert, alternate. Remo Executive, Warden John Cunningham, Counselor Nick Hilton. Heritage Advisory, Counselor Sherry Hurlbert and Counselor Patty Durkey. Joint Green Energy, Counselor Daniel Allen, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, alternate. Marketing Promotion and Levy Advisory Committee, Warden John Cunningham, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. Planning Advisory Committee, Counselor Lauren Cushing, Counselor Patty Durkey, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, Counselor Nick Hilton. Alternates, Counselor Daniel Allen and Counselor Sherry Hurlbert. Yarmouth Recreation, Counselor Lauren Cushing, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, Counselor Daniel Allen. Counselor Sherry Hurlbert, alternate, Counselor Nick Hilton, alternate. Accessibility Advisory Committee, Counselor Sherry Hurlbert and Counselor Lauren Cushing. Fence Arbitration Committee, Counselor Daniel Allen, Counselor Lauren Cushing, Counselor Nick Hilton, alternate Warden John Cunningham, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. Mariner Center Expansion Committee, Warden John Cunningham, a proposed amendment to the terms of reference to have Counselor Daniel Allen. Lake Milo Active Transportation Master Plan Steering Committee, Counselor Lauren Cushing. Did that match up?
Yes.
So, as it stands, the warden has seven official appointments, the deputy warden has six official appointments, Counselor Patty Durkey has six official appointments, Counselor Lauren Cushing has nine official appointments, Counselor Nick Hilton has three official appointments, Counselor Daniel Allen has six official appointments, and Counselor Sherry Hurlbert has four official appointments. Mr. Warden, I submit to you that we can review these at any time at council's pleasure.
Counselor Patty Durkey?
I would certainly be willing to give up heritage if someone else would like to have it. I'm, I'm fine to keep it, I just thought if there was someone... No, no, I'm fine to keep it, but, you know, for those who have had fewer appointments, it doesn't meet that often.
You, you've got to remember too, some of those committees, they meet biannually, they meet quarterly, they might meet twice, twice a year, like the CAO committee. There's some that are, that are very busy, and there's some that are not busy. So, it, it does bounce out, even though it does sound like I've taken on, well, as the warden, you do take on extra responsibilities, but some of those committees are only twice a year, like the CAO committee is, is one of those. It's not a busy committee. However, Planning Advisory, you might be sitting on that, and that might, that might meet every month, and there's a lot of information. So, when it comes to the numbers of appointments and what your workload is, that may be two different things. Like you may be committed to three committees and, like Counselor Nick Hilton is, but one of them, I believe, is Planning Advisory. That committee's very busy, but if he's also on the Fence Arbitration Committee, then that one is not busy whatsoever. So, it, it does even out. I, from just in the, my memory in the background of a lot of things, I, I think it is pretty even, even though it does sound like some counselors in committee, counselors taking on a lot more than it, than it appears, so...
That's right, Mr. Chair, and after we settle in to the routine, again, you know, if council feels like we need to shuffle the deck, then we'll shuffle the deck.
And I have done that in the past, where I've taken on a lot more than I can chew on, and sometimes you have committee meetings that you can't get the meetings dates changed, and it doesn't work with your, with your private life work schedule, so sometimes that may have to happen as well. This is an open book, we can change committees and ratify it at any time, so... Counselor Nick Hilton?
So, I've been appointed to three committees or volunteered for three committees, and I'm more than willing to take on more. I didn't want to overstep anyone requesting... And I'm more than willing to take on more. I didn't want to overstep anyone requesting a specific appointment. As far as the Heritage Advisory Committee, I, I feel my views may differ and may not benefit that portfolio to the right amount. So, that's why I, I probably shouldn't step up to that. But I am open to any other appointment. So...
No, we'll see, we'll see how it goes, Counselor Hilton. So, that's absolutely fine. If you feel that your views may not help with that committee or anything like that, that's absolutely fine. That's your prerogative. We're all equals here. We, we all try to share the load. One thing is, is the warden, I, I hope that everyone does. I hope each individual member of council decides that they're going to chair a meeting. I've been known to chair just about everything going. And I found that it was a little much. And it would certainly give you, each and every one of you, some experience in that regard. Because down the road, you may have different aspirations and, and that sort of experience. And don't be afraid to make mistakes as a chair of a committee. Absolutely not. I'll make mistakes as chair of the municipality sometimes. So... And I've just proven that by calling the deputy warden a counselor and didn't give him his due respect. So, just everyone, keep that in mind. If, if you'd like to chair a committee, please take it on. I'll certainly help you out. I, I plan on attending most meetings that I can. So... Thank you very much, council. I believe we've completed that portion of the committee, the whole meeting. It was...
Not quite, Mr. Chair.
Not quite, Madam CAO.
If it please the chair and council, a recommendation to council to ratify this would be in order.
I was going to that next, actually. I had that written down. So, after that's all done, I, I, as the Madam CAO said, I, I would entertain a motion to move this forward to council for ratification. Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
Right. So, so moved. We've, we've said it a couple of times. So, anyway, I'll move, I'll move that we forward the list of council appointments to committees to regular meeting of council for ratification.
A motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen or Counselor? Counselor Daniel Allen. My right eye, I have a lot better vision, other than with Counselor Hurlbert. Why, sorry. So, how are we going to fix this reflection? A motion on the floor to move forward to regular council the appointments of the committees. Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you, council. Item number eight, Other Business, 8.1, December Meeting Schedule. Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I wanted to inquire with council, because this is not a typical year in so, in so many ways. Typically, council will only come together in December once for a council meeting. And we normally do it in the middle of the month. Where this is your first December since the election, I wanted to bring it before you. Do you want to have committee of the whole and council, which would have meeting dates possibly on the second and 16th? Or would you want... And would be the 16th and have it be council?
Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. Uh, maybe not.
Nope. Counselor Durkey, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Durkey. Your mic, your microphone is hard to see too, I find. The, the red light, I know it's lit up now.
It's like everybody, Counselor Durkey's just got her finger on the clock.
Who was a Canadian.
Was Canadian. I'm okay with that.
Counselor Patty Durkey, you have the floor.
I just want to point out that the NSFM AGM for 2020 is on the second.
That's right. Yep.
Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
So, I'll move that we have one, one council meeting, be an evening session, regular council meeting on December 16th for December 2020.
A motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlbert. Motion on the floor to move December's regular meeting to December the 16th. Evening. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion, motion carried. Council, can you please repeat the question?
Uh, what time would that meeting be, be started? Seven?
So, actually, thank you, Counselor Cushing. I was going to bring this question before committee of the whole as well. When we were conducting council business via Zoom, we were coming together for council at 6 o'clock. But our policy does say council will be at 7:00 PM. So, I would like clarification. Now that we're able, for now, to come back together, what are the wishes of council? Six o'clock start for council or 7:00 start for council?
Well, if, if I continue to...
Yes, your mic is still on, council.
I have, I have a doctor's appointment that, that evening, right, at, I think it's 4:15. So, that's why I wanted to know for seven would be, we're good for that time, for that one.
I serve at the pleasure of council.
We certainly could follow the policy, which would normally be seven. However, council can change that policy down the road if, if it pleases council. Deputy Warden.
Right. Since, since we have one kind of request, I think, in that, that one-off special case for Counselor Cushing, if we could have that at seven on that evening. But I'd recommend, because we have our in-camera session now typically after our, our council business, regularly scheduled council business, I'd recommend that we start at, split the difference and start at 6:30 in the evening, change the policy. Maybe we could bring that to the 7:00 meeting on the, at that, at, at the, for the 16th of December. And we could make those changes there. Or, sorry, we've also got another council meeting on, on the...
25th.
25th. So, either or. But we'd keep, we'd keep that meeting on the 16th for, for seven. And then maybe moving forward. I'd recommend that we move to 6:30. It gets it done a little earlier. But, but respects people's ability to, to, you know, have, have supper and still get to the meeting and so forth. So... I, I don't know what folks think about that. But I'll, maybe I'll make that, maybe I'll make that a motion to forward that to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
So, you're going to make that a motion to forward that issue to the next forward, to, to the next...
In, 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 to start them at 6:30, with the exception of the, of the December meeting, which is started at seven. But to change the policy that we'd regularly have them at, at 6:30 effective in the new year.
Okay. A motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Counselor Patty Durkey. Deputy Warden, can you set off your mic?
Oh.
Motion on the floor, Counselor Daniel Allen.
Just, just for discussion purposes, I don't, I don't have a problem with that right now. But come springtime, my schedule, I sometimes need that extra half hour because of my work schedule. I, a lot of times like that, I can make that 7:00 meeting. And the 6:30 one, I may be late for. So, I'm just wondering if, before we make this change the policy, could, could we just see how our meetings are going to run under our new...
New norm?
Dynamic, I get, our new warden, see how our meetings are going to run and see how our schedules... Yeah. Because typically, we've, we've had late meetings and, you know, but under our new warden and deputy warden's leadership, maybe we could see, before we change the policy, we could see how the meetings are going to run, starting at seven for a month or two.
Now, before I open the floor, Deputy Warden, I agree with that. Actually, I should open the floor to you first. Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
But I, I mean, I made the motion, not understanding that it might affect some folks in, in a negative way. And, and the most important piece of the start time is to allow everybody to, to attend. So, Counselor Allen brings up a good point. So, if it's all right with the seconder, I'd just simply withdraw that motion. We can keep the start time at, at, at seven. I don't have any issue with it at, at all. So...
If, if we find we're going late?
We, we may make a, may make a change. But let's leave it at seven. It seems to have worked. And, and that extra half hour may be valuable in terms of getting... I don't think it's any better or worse. Just one, one time creates another set of problems. So, I'll just withdraw the motion if it's all right with the seconder.
Yeah. Okay. Is that all right with the seconder, Counselor Durkey? All right. Motion is withdrawn. I, I do, I do want to continue on a little bit more discussion about that. I personally would like to see how this new council with the new council members, how this will affect... I do know that Counselor Nick Hilton would prefer a change in the date, in, or sorry, on the day of, of one of the, I think, our committee of the whole meetings. Uh, I believe that maybe we should move this to our committee of the whole session in January, just to see how things are working possibly, or February. Maybe January's a little bit early. But just give us a, a month or two, just to see how everything's working out. We may decide that we're going to change days. Just because it's been this way since I've been sitting on council doesn't mean it cannot change. And it's easily changed through council policy. And we can do that through the committee of the whole, make recommendations, like make recommendations to council to change that. This is your council. I work at your pleasure. If you find something's not working, maybe we could bring that up. So, if that's the case, I would entertain a motion that someone move this item for discussion in our February Committee of the Whole meeting. Counselor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
I appreciate the, the thought, just with my work schedule. Wednesdays are quite difficult. Uh, and Tuesdays are wonderful. So, just as a council, maybe think about that going forward. And I'd like to make, to make the motion to consider, how would you like me to word that? Consider a change of day for the committee of the whole.
What we could do is make that a motion in regards to discussion on committee meetings and times.
Yep. For the February Committee of the Whole meeting to discuss dates and times for future meetings.
All right. So, a motion on the floor to move this discussion to, discussion to the February Committee of the Whole meeting to discuss council meeting dates and times. Counsel, is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. Any discussion? Counselor Trevor, sorry. Counselor Nick Hilton, would you please turn off your mic? Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
Right. And so, the conversation around the time, it, it, it may be, because I know Counselor Allen, lots of people have, have, have commitments during the, the day. Oftentimes, people work. There, there is a, a, a younger set of councilors around the table, certainly at this point, than there has been in the past. That may or may not impact what I'm going to say. But, but it may be that we want to move to a, to, to a, an evening session or a late afternoon session for the committee of the whole as well. And I'll, I'll just leave that at this point for, for people to consider. But I mean, if you've got somebody who's fishing or has a, has a regularly scheduled day job, it, it may be more efficacious for, for council to meet both times in, in, in the evening. And again, there are, I know there are paid staff, but there are ways around that. So, I'll, I'll leave that for those comments for people to ponder and think about. But I think that should be a, a conversation as well. And to, to Warden Cunningham's point, we're, we're here to serve residents. And the most important part of that, serving residents, is to ensure that, that all the councilors are able to attend easily and, and as often as possible.
All right. Is everyone clear of the motion on the floor? All right. If so, any more discussion on the motion? Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. So, that item will be moved forward to February for discussion in the committee of the whole. I think it's something that should have been done years ago. Maybe I should have brought it up. I found that some meetings I found were quite difficult to attend. Moving on. Item 8.2, Decorations for a Holiday Season was asked to be put on the agenda by Counselor Patty Durkey. Counselor Patty Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a request from a community member who would be interested in stringing lights through Port Maitland for the holiday season. And what he wanted to know is, do we have any funding for anything like that? Do we have a program for anything like that for our villages and communities? If, and so I know that there is money through the provincial government for a facade or events, et cetera. And I'm just wondering if it's something that staff might be able to look into. He did inquire with Nova Scotia Power to find out if, how could, we could do that and who would pay for that, et cetera. And apparently, the municipality would have access to using, hooking up to Nova Scotia Power for that purpose. And I don't think we've ever, ever done that in any of our communities. So, that's what I'm just wondering if we might be able to inquire as to the cost and if that's possible. What I had asked him to do is to, to put together a proposal with, if he could find out what the cost of the, the lights would be and then, and bring it forward. But I thought I'd mention it now, because our holiday season is coming up close. And I thought it was a, a great idea. And it would be very inviting environment. And, and maybe other villages might want to do something similar.
Thank you. You've done, Counselor Durkey?
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to the next microphone, which would be the deputy warden.
Right. Yeah, that, that, that is a good idea. I do know that the municipality of Barrenton does have... That's almost festive in its tone, isn't it? But no matter, the, yeah, the municipality, the municipality of Yarmouth, sorry. The municipality of Barrenton does do some decorations on their causeway. And I think Counselor Durkey's suggestion from, from vis a vis, or, or along, from one of her residents is a good one. I mean, and we might, might do it in one district this year as a, as a, as a, as a trial. But it would be nice, you know, if we, if we were able to have something in each of the seven districts. You know, wouldn't have to be a big display, but it would be nice to, for, for folks to be able to drive around the municipality and see the, to see, to see the lights and that type of thing. And I'm not saying, we sure shouldn't do it, but maybe we should investigate a little bit more. So, yeah. I agree. Sounds good.
Counselor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
So, first, I'd just like to acknowledge what a great idea that is. And also give acknowledgement to the town for what they did for Remembrance Day with the poppies on Town Hall. I think that was very respectful. And in, in 2020 with COVID, it was one of the best ways that they could possibly show their respect while maintaining social distancing. So, Frost Park is another example of this. And I, I think it's a true light in the community during winter months. And I look forward to adding to that as a municipality.
Counselor Daniel Allen.
Yes. I think it's a great idea. I'm just, I'd like to have some type of plan as to what he's thinking beforehand. Like stringing lights, I'm assuming in a community like Port Maitland or Arcadia or anywhere, it'd have to be through telephone, have to be along the telephone poles, which would be quite a stretch. So, we got to make sure that, like NS, Nova Scotia Power would allow us to use the pole. And it's not us that's going to be allowed to use them. I'm assuming it would be the individual, correct? Because he wouldn't be, he wouldn't be working for us. So, it would technically be... I, I just want to make sure that we're covered under this. That's, that's all. I, I think it's a great idea, the communities, because we have some great, out in Wellington, there's a gentleman that used to set up his Christmas lights at Christmas and put a donation box for the power, because it burned, it burned juice, right? And, and especially now, in the, in the way things are, anything that can celebrate an event is, is huge. But we also got to be mindful of any type of liability we can run into with... I just know dealing with my, with the harbor authority and Pickney's point, when it comes to using power poles and stuff, sometimes there's some issues around that. So, we just got to make sure that we cover them bases and know, know what we're doing. But I like the idea, I think it was Nick, of Nick or, it all entitles into one. But having things set up in different communities, I think, is a phenomenal idea for us to be looking at.
Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this was actually the pastor at the Wesleyan Church who came forward with this idea. They already do put up a Christmas tree in the middle of the Port Maitland. There's a piece of land that the owner allows them to do that to start with. So, his idea would be, his idea was to string lights from the school along the sidewalk, from the school to the church on the sidewalk, where the sidewalk is. And it would be along, using the power poles. And that's where he had already spoken to Nova Scotia Power. And they said that an individual doesn't have access to that, but apparently the municipality would. So, that's why I already asked him to... would, so that's why I already asked him to, to see if he could do a little research or we could help with that, to find out the cost, first of all, of putting up something like that, and then what would it be for the lights, et cetera, so, because you'd have to measure it. Anyway, I do agree with, with the others that I think, you know, getting something like that started to lift people's spirits would, would be lovely, particularly during COVID, and then, then we started trending thereafter. Also, as Counselor Hilton mentioned, that another consideration is in the summer, like we just happen to have that district in Port Maitland where people, the houses are close together, so it is like, you know, all of a sudden you drive through and there is this village with a cluster of houses. In the summer, considerations for banners, like they did for Remembrance Day or things like they did in town, or baskets of flowers, and I know there's probably a community group that might be willing to get together to do that, just some beautification of, you know, in each area could have something on the go, is something that I think we should maybe talk about.
Counselor Nick Hilton, I believe, is next. Yes, you have the floor.
I'm kinda wondering if we could have a discussion with that gentleman about maybe what it could look like, if he said on one thing, or if we could identify certain municipality-owned areas in each village, where we could do a specific display or something along that lines. I'm pro-Christmas spirit, so I'm, I'm really excited about the idea, and being new, I'm kinda curious what going forward that may look like, what would be the next step, if someone could give me some direction, that would be great.
For our folk, open up the floor to other councils in the MCA.
Sure, so this is really great dialogue, and this speaks to what the previous council had shared with me in terms of creating more cohesion across the district and creating a sense of pride in the communities. I would caution on two things, so firstly, expectations that anything could happen this Christmas, which is three weeks away, Christmas season, I, I'm going to tell you that I don't think there's any way I could pull off something myself, you know, for the district, and I would also kind of just, thinking out loud, you know, we would wanna be very intentional in how we would approach this, I think it might be a great idea, to Counselor Hilton's point, maybe to have a couple of conversations with some individuals who show initiative, who have an interest in, in that piece, and figure out if council's gonna consider a program, figure out how many different ways there could be for council to approach a program, because you don't know what you don't know, so conversations are a great way to learn.
Counselor Lauren Cushing?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. First of all, to celebrate the Christmas season, I believe is a wonderful thing. Counselor Dirkie also mentioned about banners or flower baskets in the summertime to, for a tight-knit community such as Port Maitland, there, I'd say that's a stretch of highway there, that's, it's very closed and very populated, so I think it would be a very good idea, however, as stringing lights from pole to pole, I believe we, I believe that's a very complicated project, for number one, number two, we are known to have a lot of wind around in our area in Yarmouth County, and I can see the, the wind playing havoc on some of those lights that they're stringing them from pole to pole. However, I do believe it's, it's worth, as Counselor Hilton had mentioned about further discussions, I cannot see a problem with having some type of, my lack of better words, I guess, some type of a display on, in front of the houses, such as the reindeer, or, you know, Santa or something like that, these figures that, that light up, you know, I think that would be good, but the summertime, I think it's a wonderful idea, especially in the Port Maitland area, maybe the Hebron area again, where there's, where the population is dense, I think it'd be really, really be attractive, and Arcadia is another one that's got, you know, so I think it's something really that we should look into, but the lights, I'm hesitant on that, thank you.
Counselor Daniel Allen?
Actually, this has me kind of excited, because I think this could be the start of something really good. I'm gonna even go further and say that, did we not used to have a sign committee? Did we ever have a sign committee? That we could be looking at maybe some type of signage entering communities, like when you enter Port Maitland, I know like Carlton has a, has a big welcome to Carlton sign, right? Arcadia had something, but I don't believe there's anything anymore, maybe mid, like things like that that advertise our community, welcome to this area, this is your root, or, anyways, it's just food for thought, I'm glad it was brought up, I think that could open up a lot of doors for us, really, especially to advertise our municipality, so anyways, I, it's all I had to say about that, I guess, thank you.
Counselor Nick Hilton?
So my final thoughts on it, to what Lauren, Counselor Cushing said, I agree, lights pull the pole probably don't work, especially Nova Scotia Power, but we could bring back something like what they used to do in town, and on my road growing up, they had eight-foot candy canes strapped to each pole, and I would love to see that again, I personally, or my brother personally owns three of them, so we put them up every year with great pride, so, thank you.
Counselor Patty Dirkie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I love this, this is great conversation, I'm glad to get the ball rolling, no, three weeks away, I didn't expect that we could probably have it done, but it's just something to consider that we wanna start talking about, and I thought I'd bring it up at our first committee of the whole for something new, we had, yes, we did have a committee where we were talking about signage to recognize individual communities, and we really didn't get anywhere with that, and so this is something I think that it's time that we put that back on the table and discussing it. The other thing we have to consider is that there are a number of other holidays during, during December, December season, and it would be nice if we could recognize those, Yarmouth County, Yarmouth is getting more diverse in people's cultures, so we wanna be able to, to find out and celebrate everybody's holiday.
Deputy Warden?
Yes, and certainly, I, the comment about being able to do something feasibly this year, probably not, the timeline is probably too tight, it is a wonderful idea conceptually, and likely will need some policy development around this for a whole bunch of reasons, and that, that takes time, but, but again, I did mention the municipality of Barrenton does, and I don't know if they have any policy driving it, does, does do something like they did in Yarmouth years ago in terms of decorating, you know, the poles, so obviously that's doable, but obviously this takes a lot of time, if you're working with Nova Scotia Power to get, you know, power to these, whatever device you might choose to put on a pole, and again, Counselor Allen did, did speak to the community signage, so these, these are, again, this is, conversation's kind of grown broader, and these are pieces that I think maybe we need to look at, that and, and summer themes for the community, that type of thing, but again, I'm not sure if this should be policy-driven or if it should be project-driven, or a little of both, but, but again, I, I do probably think we could move forward in some of these areas and decide on, like prioritizing what it is we'd, we'd like to do, because we certainly couldn't do, do all that, but they are all good ideas, and the community signage piece is, is really important, I think it might be a little bit different than the, and, and I don't know if it's separate or the same theme, but, but I agree with all of it, so maybe we could just task staff with thinking about that, framing it a little bit for another conversation, maybe in, in the future, so those are my comments.
Counselor Lauren Cushing?
Then I'm gonna speak on this.
This'll be my last comment. Counselor Hilton brought up about the Candy Cane Lane, and I had motion to Counselor Dirkie that Candy Cane Lane to Port Maitland, I can remember the, back in the days when I was fishing myself, used to coming into Chicagoan Point, we could see the Candy Cane Lanes in town, it's her name, however, when I was employed with the town, one of my, one of my projects that was given to me, that it didn't come to, it didn't come to reality, was to look at, at different types of Christmas ornaments that could be hung on the poles and whatnot, right, and there's a, there's a whole variety of them that could be done, so that's something to look at. The summertime with the banners and the flowers and whatnot in certain areas, I think it's a, it's a wonderful idea, and as far as this sign committee, I think Counselor Dirkie, we were on that, and I don't know what, I would, I think we should bring that back up, because the town of Yarmouth, some of the signs they have in their town pointing directions of where to go, they're just, you can't get lost, because the signs are there, they're very elaborate and, and good, but it may be a little bit more trouble with us and the municipality because of the provincial highways and stuff, right, but, but I could see some, some signers coming up to, to, let's say the welcome to Carlton, welcome to Arcadia, welcome to Pickney Point, welcome to Pembroke Beach, welcome to whatever, right, and I think it'd be, I think it would be good for us to, to reboot that, that committee at a later time, we should talk probably, and get some, whoever the counselor else wanted to be involved with it, to do some brainstorming and bring it to our council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council, a couple things on this, this started off at a, it's quite a small item, decorations for the holiday season into a more rounded discussion about things that we could do. As you all know, staff would need direction, and what I would suggest, and what has been mentioned is, is obviously that the timeline is, is very short for this upcoming Christmas season, but we cannot do anything in, in our reality to, to, now, if communities want to take on their own special projects, like Counselor Allen mentioned, a house that was lit up, there's one in Carlton, right in the top of the hill by the school, that's really lit up, if the individual, individuals or individual groups would like to do something on their own property, absolutely, but this is, goes back to a broader issue of, when we were talking about signs and stuff, and what I would like to see possibly, if it's the direction of council, to someone to make a motion to bring this forward to another upcoming committee, the whole meeting for, for a more direct discussion, so we could actually direct staff on what council's wishes are, and that would be my recommendation, because right now it'd be a little bit short notice, and, and what we started out with and what we're ending up with now is a very broad direction for, for staff to try to follow and come back with recommendations to council, so my suggestion would be along that lines, however, you, council decides what, what the directions and stuff for staff is, but this is very good discussion, that we should be moving forward on it, but we need a little bit more clear direction, and I think a little bit more thought personally. Counselor Dirkie?
I'd like to make that motion, that's exactly what I was thinking about, and yes, my finger was right there, ready to go, that we forward this to our January committee of the whole meeting, this idea of beautification of our communities for discussion for the January meetings from other communities that have that.
So you're making a motion to move this forward to the next committee of the whole meeting for discussion?
Yes, and the other thing that we need to consider looking into at that time is the province's grants, they give, they're pretty generous with grants for beautification.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a seconder, seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen, is there any more discussion on that motion? Question being called on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried unanimously, thank you, council. Item number nine, in camera, I need a motion to go into camera. Moved by Counselor Allen, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlberg, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded?